We're going to start our meeting tonight as we always do. We'll begin with prayer. And Hal Longman will lead us in prayer.
Our precious Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity of being in this place at this time. And you understand all of the motivations that bring us here. Help these candidates to express their views in terms that all of us can understand. And help us ask the questions that we need to ask of them so that they can be our political leaders in this city in the future. And we ask the senior sons plus the names who says amen.
And Barry, would you like to lead us in prayer?
(Inaudible)
I'd like to thank the candidates that are here tonight. And I'd like to apologize for the gun, gun and tea party for having such a small turnout. I've never seen a turnout this small. And perhaps that's because so many of our members do not live in the city. And our quarters, that may have something to do with it. But I assume that we were still interested even if we lived in the suburbs. So you have my apologies. I thank you again for coming. And we'll start the evening by me just making a couple of statements here and then we'll get on with it. We have in the, on the table out here, a, two petitions. One for Congressman Bison and one for Congressman Tour. That deals with a petition to stop coming court in this state. So if you happen to agree with that and you want to sign that petition out there, we would appreciate it. And we'll pass it on to our representatives when the time comes. Secondly, we will be having our Lincoln Day dinner on the 27th. Okay, and that's the Republican Party. It's going to be at the hotel at Firekeepers. Our featured speaker will be Attorney General Bill Shutey. And we'll have other dignitaries there too. Grant is going to be the moderator of the evening. We're going to have a silent auction there and it should be a really nice evening. Now, if you haven't made your reservations, I have really great news for you. You can pay at the door. And you can pay with cash, check, or credit card. The VIP begins at 5:30. Program begins, I believe, at 7:00. I'm sorry, Kathy?
Six.
Six. So you're going to be out there by 7:50. Isn't that wonderful?
No, Shutey's going to be out there.
Oh, Shutey, well then. But anyway, if you want to join us, please feel free to join us. It should be a really neat. And there will be food also.
There's brochures out on the tables as well.
If nobody heard that, we'll tell you that there are brochures on the table for the Lincoln Day dinner. The way we're going to do this debate tonight, I personally have been kind of running out of patience for the debate forums that are seated. In the last few election cycles, they seem to me to be just people hollering at one another, accusing one another, and not addressing the issues. So we just, we decided to do this this year. Okay, we decided that what we really wanted was an evening for the candidates to formally introduce themselves. Give them enough time to actually tell you who they are, what their intentions are, what their goals are. And then open it up for some questioning from the rest of us. And then wrap it up with some closing statements for the summer. We're going to begin with that. And I guess the best way to begin with it really would be just to start maybe at this end of the day. Or work our way that way with the introductions. Would you like to start it off? Yes, you may.
If I could project a little bit longer up here.
Deb?
Does that microphone?
Here, mic. Could you pick up that remote mic?
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay, we on?
Is that better, John?
John, are we on? Testing, one, two, three, ended up. Oh, there's a hole in here. All righty, are we on now? Sounds good. Sounds better, okay, very good. Well, good evening and thank you to the Tea Party for this opportunity so that you can meet your candidates here for the city election on November 3rd. And I'd like to also take this opportunity to thank the Tea Party for the opportunities I've had to be before you through this last couple of years. And to be able to spread the good news and tell you what's going on at the city level. It's been my pleasure. I'm running in my third term for Ward 1, City Commissioner. Ward 1 is the Urbandale area and numbered streets to the south, a little bit beyond Colby Avenue section there. And then east, a few streets east of 20th Street. So I give you kind of an idea of the area that I represent. My focus, I mean, we can talk about budgets, limit unnecessary spending, safe, public safety, both police, fire, and infrastructure. But you know, those are the givens that we as our supporters are charged to manage. But my continued focus right now is that everybody has the right to know how their tax dollars are being spent. We have this, a current seated commission has really taken on the issue of transparency and openness. And I know everybody's talking those words around, but we really need it. We are open to any information that is not privileged, which, for instance, the ongoing police investigation or certain things under the FOIA laws that we cannot give up. For the most part, everything in our city is open. If you don't think it is, just ask and we'll make sure you get the documents that you need. And of course, we began that process very, well, with the City Manager Search Committee. And we continued with a master plan. Police and fire facilities location is coming up. Those are important to us to get the input from those folks. And back in, I think, December, I initiated an initiative to look at our inspection division to make sure that our community, our city, was business friendly. And we are looking through that right now. We had community conversations. We took those community conversations, wrote them down to representatives of those community conversations. And we are working to make our city inspection division one that people want to come to, want to build here, and invest in. The second area that is critically important to me, and I believe everyone, is our neighborhoods. To make sure we have safe and healthy neighborhoods and walkable neighborhoods. We're working on walkable communities. We're working on connectivity to the downtown and other business sectors in the city. That's crucial. And when we look at, also placemaking, that's along with our neighborhoods, what we want our community to look like. So we're engaged in that process and that's critically important to me as well. You know, it's true that people no longer chase jobs. They chase communities. So we need to position ourselves to get our young people to stay here, to get those that go away to school to come back, and to encourage other people to make that a creep their home. And of course, we're engaged in the EC Vision process and the three pillars. And I think this is incredible. Jobs, talent, and cultural vitality. I'm just a little disappointed that we haven't got a cultural vitality issue out there. But there is some coming because if we don't have that cultural vitality, the other two pillars, though important, are not going to get the people here to take those jobs in early childhood development sector. And I would tell you that I'm pretty excited about some phenomena that's going on in our community right now. We've got some individuals who live in this community who are investing in this community into the downtown. And you will see some activity in the spring. And also, I have a very lengthy meeting today on a project that will certainly bring that cultural vitality to our community. So a lot's going on, a lot of things are important to me. And lastly, I want us to always recognize the importance that our military plays in our city. We have had, this past year, we had the privilege of meeting with some congressional delegations on the missile silo project. And we need to, as a commission, the next seated commission, be heavily, heavily engaged with our military. Because if we can get that missile silo project here, there's no end to where the economic development will end up. So with that out of the top here, and someone else, or I can talk to someone else.
Hello, everyone. My name is Katie Ferris. I'm running for one of the at-large seats on the City Commission. I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself. I was born and raised here in Battle Creek. I started my life in Urbandale. Lived there for the first five years of my life. And then moved to Lakeview area, much river side school, and on off through the Lakeview School District. Then went on to Eastern Michigan University and spent about 13 years in that part of the road, working for CBS Piermark. Through them, I was a pharmacy technician, a trainer, went on to their acquisitions division and traveled quite extensively with that. Then in 2010, I found out that I was attending my first child with my husband. And we wanted to move back to Battle Creek. I really enjoyed my childhood here and wanted her to enjoy the same type of upbringing. So we moved here, we moved to the north side. We're currently living there in a Victorian house that we're renovating. And it's really important to me that we do preserve the past here in Battle Creek. We have quite an extensive history here, an important history here. And so as part of that, I am rehabilitating my house, helping to rehabilitate my surrounding area. Also, I sit on the Historic District Commission to make sure that at large, we are protecting the historic buildings and the history of our neighborhoods. So that's a little bit about my passion for the past in Battle Creek. Presently, we need to take care of people that are here right now. So I volunteer as part of nonprofit preschool board to, so we can make sure that the young people here in our community are taken care of. I also am the vice chair for the Battle Creek Area Young Professionals with the mission of retaining the youth that we have here in Battle Creek and hopefully attracting more young professionals to the Battle Creek area. And then the future of Battle Creek. We're on the cusp of our master plan in here. It hasn't been on since 1997. So it's very important that we all are able to share our vision of what Battle Creek will look like 20, 30 years from now. So I'm part of the advisory committee to that master plan. And also the chair of the Neighborhood Planning Council, which covers the northeast portion of Battle Creek. So through both of those, I'm hopefully encouraging more people in our area to come forward and to state their dreams and their aspirations for our community. And as a commissioner, I'd like to make sure that those come to fruition. One of the big roadblocks, as Deb mentioned, is attracting developers to our area. The city was just, just completed a study through the Michigan Economic Development Corps to look at if we could become eligible to become a, I'm sorry, redevelopment-ready community. Sorry, I'm getting tongue tied. And what the redevelopment-ready community status would mean for us is that we are telling investors at large that we are ready for them to come here and invest in our community. Some of the roadblocks that we have towards gaining that status do have to do with transparency, as Deb mentioned. Those are some of the major ones that came up as blocking us from gaining that status right now. So that's something that we need to work on. And there are other things too, like if we were to locally implement the International Building Maintenance Code, that would make it easier for developers in our community to come in knowing, knowing what path to take. It's a, it's a code that is pretty standard. Kalamazoo uses it, Grand Rapids uses it, Lansing uses it. So that way, developers that are coming to our community can see right from the start what our code is. They, they know it, they're familiar with it, and it's a sign up for success in our community. So I'd like to thank you all for coming out tonight and helping to know you better. And I would really like to serve as your at-large commissioner. Thank you very much.
You're the inimigam Dean Newsome, and I am the Ward 3 City Commissioner. Steve, I really liked what you said at the top of this forum, that we want to focus on the issues. And so it's important to focus on those issues, many of which the mayor mentioned. But it's also important to focus on, in this election, the candidate that has the capability, skills, and experience to navigate through those issues and get them resolved. So let's talk about that. By way of background, I'd like to reintroduce myself. I moved here in 1998. I'm a 21-year United States Air Force veteran. I was a police officer, I was a county terrorism specialist, I was a comptroller, I was a program manager, I was a college professor all while I was in the Air Force. The great thing about the military is that you can have so many different jobs and gain so many different skills and experience to work for the same company. But I decided to stay here. I have a bachelor's degree in sociology. I have a master's degree in public administration. I'm currently a college professor. I'm also a certified leaning six sigma flag belt, so if you know anything about manufacturing, which you gotta agree you should, you understand the importance of that. I am a certified defense application university program manager. I'm also a certified snowboard instructor. So, you know, continuous learning, continuous improvement are part of my blood. Over the course of the last two years, you know, when I ran in 2013, I ran because I frankly was sick and tired of the direction that the ward was going in and that the city was going in. So I can stand by when I'm bottom, or I can bring my skills and abilities to bear in making some improvements. So one of the most significant improvements that were made, and it's going to help with the things the mayor talks about, was developing a set of goals, not only a mission and vision, but a set of goals for the city administration to execute. And tie that to a, something the city has never had, and that is a performance evaluation plan by which the city manager is held accountable for achieving that, those goals. Achieving the goals of safer, not safe neighborhoods, look at the data, our neighborhoods are safe, safer neighborhoods. Economic development is a priority. Making the contributions that we can to the school system, which by the way, is a whole separate entity of government. But there are some things that the city can do to help the school system, help our kids develop, and be able to take some of the jobs we have in the city. So I'm very excited to run again to represent Ward 3. We've got a lot done. One of the first things that we've done is, on election night, one of the city staff called me up and I, well, I had one on the phone. I said, "What about that burned out building on Capitol Avenue that's been sitting there for six years, that's a mixed hardware?" The answer I got was, "Well, you know, we don't have money to budget. If we had the money, that we'd be more than happy to do that." I've been around a lot of the time and I understand budgeting really well, better than some folks wish I did. Boy, in December, January, miraculously, $60,000 was found to demolish that commercial property where you had a burned out building on a major corridor leading into downtown. Now you have a grassy lot there. It looks better. You want to invest in the city, but they don't want to invest in the city. We have things like that. So again, I'm very, very excited to run again, bringing my skills as a program manager and 35, almost 35 years in public service there. Again, to you when we got started. Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you to the gun, gun and tea party for inviting me to this candidate forum each and every time. And always in your gracious and extending that invitation and asking you to come over for a night. So thank you very much. I also wanted to say thank you to the citizens and residents of Ward 2. I know this is being recorded, for their support since 2009 as their Ward 2 City Commissioner. My name is Lynn Ward Way, and I currently sit as the Ward 2 City Commissioner. And I'm happy to do so, happy and honored to do so. My background is I'm born and raised here in Battle Creek. Went to Battle Creek Public Schools, put their hands. And I then belonged to Eastern Michigan University. Okay. And got my bachelor's degree in health administration, worked in that field for about 10 years. Moved out to California, worked in the staffing industry for about five. Came back and worked in higher ed for about seven years. And then got a master's in organizational management. And then went on to change careers once again, working in nonprofit, up in the Battle Creek Community Foundation as a development officer. My service comes honest, I like to say, it's in my DNA. My parents were Art Gisor Award, and they were very involved in the city, doing a variety of volunteer activities. Mine started when I was gay lute, from Bluebirds, Brownies, and Girl Scouts, Candy Strippers, all the way up to the service story that I'm in now, Delta Sigma Beta Security. I have served on many boards and continue to do so, and organizations, and enjoy it quite a bit. Been a member of the Neighborhood Planning Council too since probably around 2009. And just proud to see their growth and the steps that they're taking to really make a difference. Some of the things that I'm interested in working on, should I be reelected, is to continue to work on safe burn neighborhoods, which really comes into play with some initiatives that are going on, such as the Burn Innovation Grant, criminal justice innovation grant. So enjoying and loving the work that's being done there to try and help our communities, be safer communities. That's concentrating on EC 1, 2, 3, and 4. Some other things that I'd like to continue to work on is economic development on the north side, not just for the entire city, but the city on the north side. And I'm really happy to see there's some movement in that with the oncoming business that the commission just adopted in the ordinance for the old at-home, the Bronson at-home space, to have a small manufacturer there and raise some jobs right to the neighborhood. So folks can walk to their jobs and not have to worry about transportation. Also creates some other opportunities for those who've been displaced in our community that need work and have had hard times finding it. In addition, we've got some great faith-based organizations in the area that are looking at doing things with youth, early childhood education, and also youth employment. And so supporting all of those things is something I'd like to continue to do because even those economic development opportunities from youth, youth employment, and creating youth jobs and youth businesses add to the legitimacy and the, and the interest in coming to our city as a place of destination instead of what you just passed through. In addition, I would like to keep going with the Keeping You informed series that I created back in 2009 as a way to get information out about how your tax dollars are being spent and how you utilize them. It's been a great journey. We have a television show that airs every Wednesday at 6:00 PM on Access Vision Channel 17. We do a town hall annually, we pick a different topic of interest. A pop topic this last time around, and they was economic development. And we also have email blasts, a lot of taste with land, just creating an opportunity for residents to engage as well as find out how they can access their city services. Certainly, all the standards that have been mentioned before, I will strongly continue to support. Rescue fire, the improvement of the tax dollars, et cetera. Those are all very important, we continue that. I certainly welcome anyone from Ward 2 to speak with them personally, if you're in the room or listening and want to call me up. And certainly, thank you again for this opportunity to talk about some of the things that are interesting to me and supporting this very big city. And I hope that on November 3rd, you go out and support Lynn Ward Way for Ward 2. Thank you.
I'm going to just stand right here. There's a whole lot of stuff, a floor back there, a lot of wires. I'll be the one to follow from here. So I'm just going to stand right here. I'm Susan Baldwin, and I'm a current at-large city commissioner of Battle Creek. I've been a commissioner now for 12 years. I still don't have the record, I'm still junior. But I've enjoyed my commission years greatly, and I have the great honor of serving as mayor for four years, which I truly enjoy. And I got to meet so many people and realize there's so many things we do in the, in the community. I want to talk about my priorities. And robust business growth and quality jobs still has to top my list. Because if we've got good growth and we've got good business, then we're going to have the folks who want to live here and we can get the, get the education system here. There are just some things that, and it helps when you've got some good jobs, because the business is going to happen. Because that, that breaks the law for the community. Another thing that I really want to impress is the strong safe neighborhoods. I know everybody uses the term safer. But our neighborhoods are great. Again, you've got those people that are here in the jobs, if they want a place to live, they want a place that's comfortable, that they're happy with, they have a variety that they can choose from. Whether they prefer to live right downtown, whether they want to live on the north side, they want to restore homes there. Whether they want a little more elbow room, they want to live down in the Lakeview area. Those are all options and all of those differences have great points going for them. One of the key things that I really like to push this next term is revitalizing downtown. We're working on it and it looks great. I will tell you, when I was mayor, I was in an organization called the She's Association of Mayors. They recently had their, their annual conference here last August. And I heard from a lot of my friends that came for that, who said, "Battle Creek looks great. Well, I wish our downtown was that wonderful." So we look good. We still got a lot of empty buildings down there. One of the things that I think that the city can do is be a little more proactive in getting those buildings ready for folks to move into. When you're talking about a small business, and you're talking about it's really had some, some, not enough attention paid to it. It's going to take a lot to bring that building back. So if we can help and do some of the basic work there, work with our downtown developer folks, of course, the city's doing a lot of that now through Ted Deering and his assistant city manager position, I think that's going to help a lot. Whitebox something so that somebody can hand it to him. Now, part of doing that is we need to have efficient, effective, and responsive city government. I really would like to see us get a lot more work done online. There are a lot of communities around town, around the state, Grand Rapids is one, Kalamazoo's another, where you can apply for a number of your permits right online. Takes a process quickly. I'd really like to see that done here at the city because that's going to make it a little more business friendly and kind of be a little bit more of a one-stop shop place if we can establish it for us to get work done. So all of those lead to the enhanced quality of white government. I'm really looking forward to having another few years. Sometimes you've got a little of that history, it's nice to have around. You're on, you should say, "Yeah, I remember when you talked about that." Some ideas that we had two years ago, maybe now's the time. We've really got a ton of people. Thank you.
I'll follow Susan's example and stand right here. Thank you, everyone. It's such a pleasure to be here tonight and to have this opportunity and to be able to speak and be with folks. It's been one of my real pleasures in this process of campaigning, of meeting and talking to a lot of different folks, representing lots of different areas of our city and, and different backgrounds. So my name is Kate Flores, and I'm running for the Ward 3 Commission seat. And so as someone, you know, this is my first time running for public office. It's not my first time in leadership and position here in Battle Creek. So I'd like to, as someone new in this, I'd like to share a little bit also about my background so you can get to know me as well. And also, as everyone is, you know, we do share with you some of the things that are high on my list of priorities. So I was raised, I was born and raised in Union City, so just south of Battle Creek, so I've had ties. And, you know, so for some that do work regionally, you'll know Union City is an area that has lots of ties socially, economically. You know, part of my school, in high school, I was up here in Battle Creek, did some dual enrollment. And a lot of my background, from a very early age, I've been very interested in other cultures. And I think I knew from very young that when you talk to a lot of different diverse people, you get a lot of different ideas, and that adds strength and possibilities. And so I studied at U of M, my area was social sciences and community and development, international development. I spent a lot of time in Latin America, where's also where I learned Spanish, fluent in Spanish as well. And it's certainly my groundwork. I sort of expected to be international, and I was even voted in high school, most likely to live farthest away. And how, you know, my brother was the one in Toronto, and I'm here in Battle Creek. You know, keep coming back. keep coming back. Um, so my background here in Battle Creek, I've worked in nonprofits for over a decade here. I started out at Legal Services, um, doing community education work, co-leading a project, uh, working in our urban neighborhoods primarily around rental housing, um, and, um, supporting our, um, um, families around the economic security. Uh, and then the last seven years, I've been, I was the executive director of the nonprofit Voces, which means voices in Spanish. Um, and I actually, in between those, I went, I was at the University of Trent on my master's degree as a community development. Uh, and that was a degree that pulls in lots of interdisciplinary and I think that represents a lot of the way that I think. Um, at Voces, I started, we started from scratch, so there was an organization that, um, I was brought back in to be able to lead it, um, based on the relationships that I developed, um, across the nonprofit community, particularly as well as our grassroots community, our residents, um, and started out from ground zero. We had some initial grant money and grew it from an organization from nothing, no place, no location, into an organization that now operates and is thriving on over a half million dollar budget and doing tons of great work, um, in education and healthcare, uh, serving hundreds of families every year. Um, I left Voces this last July, um, primarily because I was ready to grow. And I keep sort of telling people, I didn't leave to be able to run for the commission, um, but as the opportunity came up, I thought, you know, this is a way, you know, I've done programs, I've worked with a lot of different people, a lot of different sectors here in Battle Creek. Um, and I also know from that, pro, programs are great, I love working on the ground with people, and I also know that there needs to be bigger level impact, you know, when it comes to policy, of being able to influence and have a community that's thriving economically, uh, with education, uh, with people that are, um, that feel that they have opportunities and access to opportunities and where everyone feels that they have a voice at the table. So that's some of my background. Um, some of the things that are really important to me right now, I actually got really excited today, um, because I've been having, you know, one of the ways I work, um, I believe in developing relationships, I develop relationships, you know, from, you know, all of our residents, our neighbors, the leaders in lots of different sectors. And I had some meetings this morning that, um, I'm not gonna take full credit for this idea because it's something that's been generating a lot for a while, but I think there's real potential in our city. We, in Ward Three, we have real strengths, um, in our educational system along North Avenue with Roosevelt, we have Miller College, KCC, and then over the CACC, and now we also have a vacant building, which is the Southwest Rehab Center. So I'm interested in seeing how we develop a talent corridor. We have our motor mile here in Battle Creek, how do we create also a talent corridor, um, that's really building on, we have a lot of potential right now with the BC Vision work, a lot of energy, a lot of different people coming together that haven't come together before around workforce development and education. Um, and then we have a big open building, and so I had some meetings today and I think it's a real possibility for Battle Creek. I'd like to see that building filled, I think there's a lot of possibility of bringing together people that haven't worked together before, um, to really create a vision around workforce development that can really lead into that economic vision for Battle Creek. Um, that's one. A second one that I'm really interested in, um, is equity and inclusion. Um, my background here is around making sure that everyone in our community, we have a very rich heritage, um, Katie talked a few minutes ago about history, there's such a rich heritage here in Battle Creek, both historically and then the populations. Uh, my background again, especially in the last seven years, has worked primarily with a lot of our immigrant communities. Uh, we have a Raffino community, we have a Burmese community, we have a Japanese community, uh, we have very diverse different communities. Um, and I'd like to see those strengths of every single group, um, have a voice at the table and see how do we tap into all of the, uh, those different ideas and abilities so that everyone in our city can thrive. So that's important to me. Um, the third one that I'd like to mention is, um, as others have said around neighborhoods, and what does it really take to create vibrant neighborhoods? I've been doing a lot of listening over the last, um, you know, two months onto residents and I'm hearing, in our ward, we have very, we have different neighborhoods, ones that are thriving, doing very well, um, and then we have areas that are really struggling. And I think everybody, um, you know, deserves to live in a neighborhood that they feel safe, where they feel connected, um, and that something has been really interesting in thinking about vibrant neighborhoods is there's been a lot of actually really great work happening in the city over, even when I was at Legal Services ten years ago, they were just starting to figure out how to start knocking down some of the blighted in buildings. That was start, you know, just at that point as I recall, um, you know, recognizing there were big issues. There's been a lot of progress made since then of removing blighted property, but I'd really want for us as a city to have a vision of how we're going to create something, how are we going to create vibrancy? It's one thing, it's a great step, we gotta do it to knock things down, how do we create things and how do we create neighborhoods where people have support systems and feel connected to one another, have relationships with their neighbors? I've met a lot of folks in our neighborhoods that don't feel that right now, that have lived for there for twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty years and don't feel connected to the people that they're living around. And my experience has been, when you can create connections, when people can listen to each other and know each other, then that's a strong base for how we can move forward as a community. So again, thank you very much, it's a pleasure being here.
Thank you very much to the Calvin County Tea Party, to Steve France, although the room is not filled here tonight, I've been here before where we couldn't even find enough chairs for the people that wanted to sit in this room. So although we aren't sold out tonight, I'm sure that people will be watching on Access Vision, and I wanna thank Johnny Cash for taking the time to film this, I know that probably we were here a couple hours beforehand, so there are people that work behind the scenes and that's very nice. And I know each one of us has candidates that are very appreciative of that. My name's Mark Banky, I've been a lifelong resident of Battle Creek and a lifelong city commissioner at the same time. In ninety-nine, ninety-one, and, um, that's a number of years ago. But, um, I took up, was a battler for a couple of years in two thousand and nine, got back and out in two thousand and eleven. And I'm gonna say thank you to the voters of Battle Creek because you inspired me to run for office, it's in my blood, I enjoy it, and, uh, I guess more than anything else, I think I'm reflective of what has been said here today, people want a strong, they want a government that is gonna be representative of the people of Battle Creek. And, um, there's so many people that really can cut through the government red tape, but then there are some of us that aren't unable to do it. And that's why we run for office, or so that we can have a government that is representative of the people. And I think Dean Newsom really, um, gives a great example, the building on Northeast Capitol near Mexico or set vacant, it burned out for a number of years, the people in that neighborhood were very frustrated, the business owners were very frustrated, and we reacted as a commission and as a ward commissioner, Dean Newsom led the charge and made certain that the building was torn down and applying out why it had been torn down for a number of years. Well, that's what people want in Battle Creek, they want a pit lane department, they want a fire department, and they want infrastructure that is good. I'm here to tell you right now that when you look at the streets that we have rebuilt, um, and even sidewalks that we have taken care of, they're second to none. I think Calvin County Road Commission can take a lesson from us when it comes to when we computerize all of our streets and make certain that we have the best streets in Calvin County. And I'm very serious about that. I think the Calvin County Board of Commissioners should take, uh, that education or a lesson from our engineering department because they do a very good job. Each one of our streets is computerized, we know when they're aging, when they need to be, um, chipped and sealed, or when they need to be revamped or rebuilt, and that's very important. That's what people want, they want infrastructure that is good in Battle Creek. So I look forward to the campaign, uh, although we don't have a full house here tonight, I think it's indicative of the quality of candidates that we have. So thank you very much, um, if I can earn your support, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, when you go last, you can just say ditto. Uh, my name is Dave Walters and currently I'm an at-large commissioner, but I'm running unopposed in Ward Five this time, so barring any revolt of any sort, uh, on the evening of November the third, I should be the Ward Five Commissioner. Uh, I wanna tell you why I'm here first of all, and you may think it's corny, but it's the truth. Uh, my mom and dad, who have long passed away, uh, my dad enlisted, this is his luck, he enlisted December sixth, nineteen forty-one, but in reality, if you had talked with him, if you were still alive, he did that because he knew it was inevitable. Uh, so he served in the Army Air Corps and was on B-24s in the South Pacific, three distinguished flying crosses, and I'd be lying if I said I'm not proud of him. While he's overseas, my mom served in the civilian corps here, uh, right downtown, right close to where we are, uh, the old duplex building, those of you from Battle Creek that remember that before it was torn down, and then they made bombs for the very bombers that my father flew in. So for a three-year period, she served our nation as well. My brother enlisted the United States Army in nineteen sixty-five, I enlisted in the United States Air Force in nineteen seventy-four, my oldest son enlisted in the United States Air Force and served overseas in, uh, Iraq and Saudi Arabia. So I guess you might say that the service, the services that I'm standing here is because of them. Uh, and so it was kind of ingrained in me. Call that corny, but it's the absolute truth. My family now, I'm married to Barbara Walters, which is pretty cool, isn't it? Uh, and most of you that don't are right now, she watches as I access vision, I'm in trouble. Uh, she, she retired, as I did, from the city of Battle Creek, from the Battle Creek Police Department. Uh, I did twenty-one years because we were able to buy four years of military service. My wife did twenty-five years, retired as a cold case detective, and my oldest son Derek right now has just completed nine years as patrolman at the police department. So once again, I just wanna say that my roots, why I'm standing here tonight is because of service. And I'll tell you what it is, it serves to our country, it serves to our state, 'cause I love both of those, but I also love Battle Creek and that's why I'm here. Uh, a couple of things, uh, one thing I wanna read to you, uh, normally I like to just talk off the cuff, but if you go to the city of Battle Creek website, all of us have our pictures there, they come up with a, a statement of sorts. I just wanna read mine to you. Uh, I tried to put some thought in it and I think this also speaks to what I'm trying to do as a commissioner. Serving on the Battle Creek City Commission is an honor and privilege. Being proud of Battle Creek makes me want to help strengthen the city and provide a voice for the people that live, work, and visit here. Let's continue to work together to make Battle Creek a place where folks can live strong, prosper, maintain a safe neighborly and business-friendly environment. Uh, I really believe in those core values and that's what we need to do. And one specific pinpointed here, I'll like to throw tonight, is the same thing that I talked about two years ago here, is our fee and bond schedule. I, I, it's kind of just a thorn in my side a little bit, and, uh, it's fifty-some pages of fees that the city, the city person, for example, I gotta give you one, just, this is one of the thorns, if your water heater goes bad, the permit that you need to get to replace your water heater costs you a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, I can't tell you how many people probably don't get that permit. Uh, so one of the things that we didn't, didn't do in the last two years, and part of that is my fault because we got sidetracked on some different things, um, is that we did not, we worked on it a little bit, but not the way I'd like to see. That fifty-four pages, as far as I'm concerned, needs to be condensed a lot, and those numbers need to go down. So, um, I think we need to do some things a little differently. One of the ideas that some of us had, what if we had one month's day in the springtime of where, uh, certain permit fees are just waived in general, just to stimulate, just to stimulate people working on their homes or their businesses? And, and just a thirty-day period, would that not help our economy as well as homeowners and business owners as well? So I just wanted to, to mention that. I can't thank you enough to the Tea Parting Steve for the invitation, everyone, and all the support over the years, and I look forward to continuing to work hard for all of you as a city commissioner here in Battle Creek. Thank you very, very much.
The way we're gonna do this, uh, question and answer is that we're going to take a question and we're gonna make that question available to everybody individually, one at a time. Anybody that wants to respond to the question is going to be allowed to do that. And, uh, I'm gonna ask the first question, and the question I'm gonna ask is, why as a homeowner do I need a permit to put a new water heater in the van? It isn't that a hundred and fifty dollars is too much, it's that it's my choice, to either have hot water or cold water. So you need to look at more than just the finance that matters. Uh, so we'll open it up to questions and, uh, if you have a question, please raise your hand or we'll start. We have one gentleman in the red shirt.
Uh, may I direct a question to a specific candidate? The others can answer it, but, uh, it has to do with charitable organizations in the city, and we have one candidate who was very much a volunteer organist. So I'd like to direct it to Katie, but everybody, Katie Flores.
Well, you can direct it, but everybody has a chance to answer.
Okay. Uh, I am, uh, on the Salvation Army Advisory Board and we're starting to buy food for our Thanksgiving Christmas baskets. And, uh, we're finding out that back last year as well, and this year, that we can buy the food from Sable Hots and Alti, who are four nonprofit organizations, for less money than we buy from the South Central Michigan Food Bank. Now, it's a sign of nobody is really being good stewards over our charities. Um, last month, uh, the city authorized a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Neighborhoods Inc. There isn't a person, not our city manager, nobody who can actually tell me how they spent that money. So as a charity, how does the, uh, city commission exercise stewardship over charitable organization for your given money here?
And who did you direct that?
Uh, Kate Flores.
Oh, okay.
So, um, there's a whole bunch in that question and in terms of the, you know, the city's, what it has already done in terms of the Neighborhoods Inc. grant, I don't have the details about that, so maybe another commissioner can speak to that directly. Um, there are hundreds, I don't even know the number of nonprofits in Battle Creek, but we're one of the areas that, you know, counties in the state that has one of the highest numbers. Um, so that's actually a really hard and difficult question. The Food Bank is a very completely different organization from, um, Voces, the Urban League, um, the Women's Co-op. So, you know, and some of those the city does work with and some doesn't, you know, there's a whole bunch, again, there's hundreds, so I don't, I don't have an easy question for that or easy answer for that.
Do you have a stewardship responsibility when you do authorize funds through a charitable organization?
I think there's regardless, always an accountability, period, there's gotta be accountability.
I really feel that transparency is very important, and I think we witnessed here firsthand with some of the issues at Summit Point, BCU, and other, some of the other organizations that are nonprofits, quote-unquote, um, when the board of directors of those organizations don't take responsibility and make certain that taxpayers' dollars are accounted for. Um, I think we're all learning from some of the experiences of those two organizations, and there's other organizations that you've heard of lately. Um, one that's not too far from here, um, right at the Washington Street Bridge, um, no matter what, it's our responsibility of elect, as elected officials, to make sure that the taxpayers' dollars that are spent are accountable. And it starts right here and it ends right here as a city commissioner, it work controlling those funds.
Dean, first of all, thank you very much for your service to Salvation Army. As a, as a poor kid growing up in eastern suburbs of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, I wouldn't be where I am today if it wasn't for the Salvation Army. So I tend to give back to the annual adoptive program, which I know is exactly what you're talking about. My organization sponsors about six hundred families a year during that time, so thank you. Second, if I can tell you, for the money banks, Neighborhoods Incorporated, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in large part went towards rehabilitating a couple of homes to provide housing for folks so that they can afford it to be able to live and work in the city of Battle Creek.
Your mic's not on.
So then let's talk about governance, and let's talk about Neighborhoods Incorporated governance specifically, which I think is what you're most interested in.
I'm interested in how they spent their money.
Right, but your point is governance and oversight and accountability for how the money is spent. I get, on the board of directors of Neighborhoods Incorporated sits Susan Bensel, whose last day, unfortunately, we should be leaving the city, is the end of next week, but the city actually has a member sitting on and chairing the board of Neighborhoods Incorporated. So we have the tool for ensuring the oversight of funds that we give to nonprofits, it's there. If, if I could speak to that too, please? Go ahead.
Thank you. I also sit on the board, uh, as a coordinator as part of the city commission, and everything Dean was saying is, is correct. Um, so a city commissioner is assigned to that board as well. And, but we also get a full report, um, each year as far as how those dollars are being spent, but certainly we also, uh, get updates to make sure there's some accountability during our board meetings on what's happening with, with those funds. So yeah, we're definitely holding, at least in NBC a couple, I know that we're back as I'm sitting on board, uh, the any dollars that we control that are with nonprofits, we, we are obligated to make sure there's transparency and to make sure that you know those dollars are being spent as, as prescribed. and to make sure that you know those dollars are being spent as prescribed.
If I could, just to add one quick thing, I just met with Mr. Phillips earlier this week regarding that very question. And one of the things that we talked about to help answer that question, not only for the commissioners up here, but as well as the citizens, is to talk with the mayor and have a workshop where indeed, a lot of people don't even know what Neighborhood's Inc. does. I mean, really, they just don't, believe it or not. So we want to have that outlined as well, and where the money goes. And he said they would be willing to come, do a workshop for us prior to one of our city commission meetings. So everyone, and any citizen that would want to see that, is up to speed on it, sir.
Okay.
Before we go to another question, Andy had told me that he was gonna be late because he had a family. I think it's a school name with their children, wasn't it? And so now that he's here, I'd like to give Andy a few minutes to introduce himself, okay? And then we'll get back to the question.
All right, thank you, Steve. Yeah, I apologize, since I was at a pair of teacher conferences at my school, and it was in the night, that we could coordinate that with my wife's schedule and both of the teachers' schedules. And I had committed to the time, and then the next day I got the email from Steve, and said, no, I have to go do that. So I will be there as much as I can. So thank you, thank you for having us. My name is Andy Helmwalt, I've been an N.A. large commissioner for the past two terms, four years. Proud to do that, proud to be running again. It's an exciting time for the city, we have lots of new stuff going on. I don't have, I haven't heard what everyone else has described, but we just keep going. I'll say a couple more words at the end, and I'd be glad to stick around if anybody wants to talk, you know, one-on-one, or ask me questions that may have missed here. But thank you very much for the opportunity to come out and talk, drive through the voters.
Question?
Yes, this is for the commissioners that are commissioners now, and the commissioners that are running for it. How do you feel the voter turnout is so bad, is what it is, and according to the room too? Do you feel that it's because of the Domenico situation that just happened? And also, do you feel it was because of the Paul Engels situation where Mr. Newsom stated that Paul Engels' family was more important than anything else? But the little girls that happened, that eight thousand girls that was on his computer, Mr. Newsom never said how he felt sorry for him. But my question is, do you think that it was publicized about you all commissioners that were in there, the way you handled Domenico, the way you handled Paul Engels, the way you handled our tax money, the way how you handled public comment when people asked you questions at city commission meetings? Mr. Helmwalt was asked, did you go to the TIFSA and ask them to give us money, give him money to keep Cobra and School open? That question was never answered at the city commission meeting. Now I would like to ask Andy, now that he's here, did you go to TIFSA and ask them to money to keep Cobra and School? So if you would, the commissioners, please answer, the ones that are running, please.
Okay, if you ask several questions, just one, do you want?
How about both of them? How about the most important voter turnout?
That's right, voter turnout is the most important question. And I would say, don't believe me, research the data for yourself, Mr. Combs. Where in good times or bad, over the last fifteen, twenty years in city of Battle Creek, the voter turnout has never been anything but between nine and fifteen percent. Let me tell you what I believe is the single largest reason. The city commission elections occur in an off-season. You align the city commission election when the state representative elections occur, you'll get a higher voter turnout. You don't believe me? Look at the voter turnout in the city commission election in 2013 versus the representative election in 2014. I pulled the data from the city clerk's office, it's there, three to four times as many voters. If you do that, then you automatically line up with the gubernatorial elections and the presidential elections. That's how you get more voters, plain and simple.
As U.S. commissioner, how come you didn't try to approve of that, you knew that this year was?
Improve the turnout? As I said, in good times or in bad, in the course of the city's history, the voter turnout has been low. The single largest reason is because it's off-election.
Anybody else want to answer that question?
John, as a former city clerk, and we have a county clerk here too, she probably would agree that historically, city elections have been horrible. We used to have them in April, just a city election, they were five, six percent. We moved them to November on years, still very low. I think the fear with most communities, and I would agree that we do have a lot of folks that go out to vote for state and federal before they'll vote for city. And sometimes those larger ballots you can lose, they can lose the local piece that would be at the end of the ballot. We haven't proven that, but it could very well happen. So historically, that's the way it is, and when I was clerk, I would go out and I would tell people, it's great to vote for the president, it's great to vote for your state, or you should vote for every election, but folks, the election is gonna impact your day-to-day life in this city, is your local election. And I'm appalled at the turnout in this city personally.
Do you feel that your demeanor as commissioners during this term had an impact on the voter ship in Battle Creek, why they don't vote?
I do not, I do not.
Well, I'm not entirely certain. I don't know how we can answer that, we haven't had the election yet. I'm confused as to what that question means. You're saying, did our behavior as commissioners this term influence?
Yes, put an influence on the public, not to vote because of the way your demeanor is at commission meetings, as commissioners.
We will see, we have the elections in a couple of weeks.
You gotta get, okay, that angle, answer.
The other, well, I'm sorry, I just don't understand your question.
It's easy to understand, you think your demeanor as commissioners in the past has had an influence on the voters of Battle Creek, on your decisions that you have made? Paul Engels, Domenico situation, do you think that they see this and say, it's a waste of time to vote for you guys? Because of the way you are? Now that's my question. Do you think that's why, your demeanor? Now that's easy to answer, I mean, it's an easy question.
Yes, I think the way that we govern affects the way people vote or not. And I can also add that we saw a drop in turnout last time, which is the time before. But that, you know, that matches up with, there's been an overall decline, you know, over the last ten years or so. You compare presidential presidential, that's decline. You compare gubernatorial to gubernatorial, that's decline. But people, for a variety of reasons, are becoming disenchanted maybe with the process. And that's, you know, that's the federal government, the state government, that it all bleeds in together. And I think, you know, someone's opinion of the entire multi-level system of government is gonna have some play on whether or not they vote, even in local elections, or attitude about government in general. It's just the pattern we're seeing, and yes, everybody's behavior contributes to that in some way. Whether or not the things that have happened during this term will impact, I assume that at some level, of course it will. To answer your other question about Tifena.
Okay, the follow-up question on the incomfits that are coming in. How would you change the demeanor of the commission, once you become a commissioner, according to the way how they're running it now? How would you do it? How would you change it to make it better?
So I'm really glad in general that you asked this question, because, you know, as I've gotten involved, you know, in this and the campaign, the issue around voter engagement is highly concerning. And, you know, I echo Deb Owens that it's unacceptable, and when you look at it, it's pretty outrageous. And so I actually think it needs to be a high priority of our city government, of our community, to say, what is it, you know, what is it gonna take for people to feel that they have a voice, feel inspired, feel connected? One of the things that, in general, again, not to speak in specifics, but in general, one thing that I see and what I hear from residents in our community is, you know, there needs to be.
Excuse me, just a minute. Could you people, do people either base their attention here or take it outside?
May I? She just approached me.
Well, I understand, I understand, but we have somebody speaking.
Okay, okay.
You can excuse me.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, you know, so again, I've been involved in lots of different outreach activities. It's been a lot of my primary role in the past. If you want people engaged, you gotta give them a vision. The truth is, a lot of our residents, you know, our everyday people in our community, our working people, you know, their, I mean, the infrastructure is great, it's gotta be there, it's gotta be efficient, it's gotta be high-quality. But it's not like the vision that's gonna inspire people to say, I gotta get involved, you know, my voice really matters. And people gotta feel like their voice does actually matter, it's going to be heard, things are going to get done. So yeah, I think overall, you know, I think as a commission, we need to be looking at how are we getting people engaged and keeping people engaged.
So as I've come across this, I would say that some of the dramatics over the past year and a half or so have affected the way the voters are looking at the commission in general. The first question that everybody's asking me is like, why do you want to get involved with that? Because they're seeing what's going on on TV, they're seeing the high drama of it. I really hope that as a commissioner, we can bring it back to the basics and be able to move forward on some of the actual work that needs to be done. I think that if we can convey to the voters what that work is, what it looks like, and how it affects them directly, I think that that will help affect voter turnout in the long run, and help them feel more connected to local government. But yeah, it's imperative on us that we help make that connection to show people how local government affects their daily lives so much more than other local government like that.
I also wanted to comment on the local turnout question. Certainly some of the things that have been mentioned, there's a variety of reasons. People have to feel like there's a reason for them to come out and vote, and it's connected to them in some way. And so that certainly draws folks out, and they feel that there's an issue that they want to address, and they want to make sure that their voice is heard through whatever issues they are having. So they come out and vote for the person they feel can address those issues. I also thought about moving the election to the even years with the gubernatorial race, or federal race as well. But some of those ballots can get so long with ballot issues, and now the school board elections are part of that as well. So it can get very long, and get kind of lost in the shuffle. So that might be a way to do it, but I'd like to look at other options. Another one that comes to mind in working with NAACP, Philip Randolph, other organizations in new voter education, I think we really need to bring back the opportunity for people to learn how these voting machines work, how to fill out and complete a ballot. Because as simple as it may seem, there are individuals who are intimidated by the process, and don't want to come out, they don't want to be embarrassed, or feel they might be embarrassed. So I think the more opportunities we educate people on the voting process itself, that can help give them the confidence to get involved and participate in the process.
Thank you. I'd like to address, I guess, the one elephant in the room about the demeanor of the meetings and how we control those. I was mayor for a year, and Mayor Owens has been the last year. And I'm still campaigning, because unimposed or not, I still think you need to earn that vote. And as I'm going door-to-door, people are telling me, hey, that is a business meeting. I would like to come down there and speak, but some of the people that come up and speak, their lack of decorum, and realizing it's a business meeting, and the respect that they have, even though we want to hear and not violate anyone's First Amendment rights, that some people are intimidated by that. So we certainly, as a commission, are working with the city attorneys, working with the different people involved, working with each other, because we have a rules, topics, meetings committee on how to possibly make sure that we indeed do not violate anyone's rights, still let them speak, but still keep a certain decorum, and still have our business face in place. Thank you.
One more thing about voter turnout that I think is really important not to overlook is that something that concerns me really about it isn't just the sheer number of people voting, or not voting. It's that whose voice is being heard in the process? If you look at the demographics of the typical city electorate, you're gonna see demographics that are way out of, sorry, that are way out of whack, and that are not representative of the entire community. So to me, as important as the actual numbers of people, is the whose voice relative to who is being heard. And I think, you know, as a community, as a culture, we friggin' look at how to encourage people to vote, we need to take a serious look at doing so with an end of equity, and make sure that the voices we're hearing are balanced and are representative of the whole community.
You got Paul's question? The little thing that was going on back here just now, is that again, getting back to the city commission, the question was asked to Andy as a commissioner about the TIFSA fund. The stirrup was back here, because I don't mean to put the lady on the spot, but she said something about Al Babaski or something like that. I don't mean to put her up, or say, he said that. You did ask for the TIFSA.
All right, he said he's.
Okay, okay.
One unfortunate thing about all of this is we're gonna get old, we're gonna lose our hair, we're gonna get gray. And at some point, John, that experience has to count for something. So I really gotta direct a question for Mark Vicki, since his family are, him and his family are longtime business owners in this city. And he's obviously has a lot of corporate knowledge in the city as a corporation. That is, for a long time, we developed Fort Custer, we had a lot of businesses come here, we've had a lot of growth. Lately, it's kind of been stagnant. Now, we have an organization like Battle Creek Unlimited or whatever, to get this business in here. We just haven't had the growth, and I'm wondering, as a city commission, what can you folks do to further develop Fort Custer and the surrounding battle, not just Fort Custer? We have a lot of places for business to be, to come up in this city, a lot of vacant lots, et cetera. What can you do to get this business going and growing again here in the city?
Good question, John Barry. The city commission during the past two years has worked with our city administration to make BCU stronger, more effective, and more transparent. We really looked at their contract, we looked at some of the funds in which they administer, and we found that they needed to be more efficient. And we asked them to accept some responsibility to demonstrate to the citizens of Battle Creek that they are indeed working hard to get new jobs here. We're concerned, as Lynn Ward Brayd mentioned earlier, the jobs on the north side of Battle Creek, wards one, two, and three. And we're gonna receive reports twice a year now from BCU identifying the jobs that they have recruited or created in our community, and where those people live. The jobs that are created outside of Battle Creek, so we are aware of those. We're also gonna look at the companies that have left Battle Creek and the companies that have come into Battle Creek. And we're gonna receive those reports. That's the first time ever that we've received any type of report from BCU on that. BCU is also under some restructuring. They used to be a board of close to forty people, very ineffective when they had award meetings, and now they have a very small board of close to ten, maybe twelve people, with the mayor sitting on there. Joe Schwartz, our congressman, former congressman, sits on there, and a couple other people. But they're more effective, we've strengthened them, we've sustained BCU. And now, it's up to their CEO to do the job that the city commission and the city administration have charged them to do. I think you'll see some great things with BCU going forward. A lot of people don't even know this, but the CEO of the Keller family now is joining the BCU board. So hopefully, some of his influences will be able to bring jobs to the city of Battle Creek.
Thank you. Battle Creek Unlimited has been, over several decades, one of the real jewels we had in our community. Just look at the industrial park out there. Ten thousand jobs sit out there now. Where in the early seventies, there was nothing, there was an empty fort. That, you know, that's probably one of the biggest brownfield redevelopment projects in the whole country, is what we managed to do out there. So I think that, yes, I'm happy to say that we're gonna have some reports and some details, and sometimes you gotta take a look at doing things a little differently. But I do think Battle Creek Unlimited has to get some credit for all of the great work that they've done out there. So let's keep the support, let's make sure that we're getting our answers, that they're providing input, and we're sharing our expectations as well. But I do think we need to recognize that that's been a good organization.
To add to that, I think the mayor mentioned it before, but we really need to get behind bringing that missile, boosting missile mission to the city of Battle Creek. That is going to just bring a wealth of opportunity and economic development in so many ways to our city if we're able to get that. So certainly citizens can engage with us, our military, and those involved to try and really... really position us in a way that those in Congress who are looking at this identify us as the premier and number one choice for that mission. I think another thing that really will help with, I mean, economic development here, is continue to work on the inspections and code departments and to reset that. We know that those community conversations have already taken place, small task forces taken place to really make us business friendly and because we we hear it continually here that there are challenges around doing business with the city of Battle Creek. Realtors, a lot of us went to that particular update that you want every year, there's frustrations there when trying to sell homes in the city of Battle Creek. So I think we're going to continually be focused on making it a fair process, but making it a better process to do business with the city of Battle Creek. There's a couple that just bought some property, a commercial property, they're a nonprofit organization, they're having struggles right now in Ward to try to get through the process. Seems very overwhelming. We're trying to work with them to to change these processes so that we can really support those who want to add to vitality and the opportunities here in Battle Creek. So we got to continue to do that. Next is going to be those community conversations on code. I don't know about all the other commissioners, but I would say probably eighty to eighty-five percent of my calls have to do with code, compliance and concerns or questions. And so we could, I know it's not going to happen overnight, but certainly code inspection is something that I'm focused on, trying to make that a process that is better for for our residents and for those who want to do business with us. And then again, I'll echo, trying to create opportunities right here on the north side and and work with individuals to remove the stigma and the fear of establishing a business. We have a Center for Entrepreneurship, we have Generation E. I know a lot of my fellow commissioners have been involved with those organizations, I know I have, and they're a great resource that some, you know, some just don't know that art is there, that they can tap into. Because I think, again, small businesses really help generate a vibrant city. So those are some of the things that I was think I would think about when it comes to economic development. Thanks for the question.
This question is for Susan Baldwin. On February eleventh, two thousand eleven, in the commission forum, you were asked a question. The question was, how many times have any cost increases been put in front of you as a city commissioner that you voted against? Your response was, couldn't tell the answer for that, that you'd lobbied hard against cost increases. Less than two weeks later, a article in the paper showed that you had four hundred and thirty-five cost increases from two thousand seven to two thousand eleven. It also showed in all the commission agendas, not only in the commission comments on the resolutions, but also the end comments, that there was no comments whatsoever in regards to any turning down or lobbying against any cost increases. So I guess my question to you is, since two thousand eleven, anything that's put in front of you that has been a cost increase that you voted against? And how many of them were there?
One of the things that you have to remember is that not everything makes it to the desks of the commissioners to vote on. We talk about a lot of issues at workshops, we kind of have a lot of input prior to when it's coming up for a vote. So there can be a lot of discussion as to what we want to do. What Commissioner Walters is talking about, about the the fee and bond schedule, which is what you often refer to when you refer to these number increases. Sure, let's take a look at that and those that's work that will get done, but it doesn't necessarily get to be voted on. So when something gets to the commission, it's been vetted not over, not only by the staff, but a lot of the commissioners.
Well, let me reverse the question. On December sixteen, two thousand fourteen, Resolution Forty-two was brought forward to the city commission on the tax bond issue. Hundred and thirty cost increases were approved. Did you vote against that?
As a matter of fact, on December sixteenth, I did not attend the commission meeting. I was with my family at an event.
You have a commission.
So let me, let me give an example, a very concrete example of what Susan Baldwin was talking about, and she's dead right. Many of these things never make the light of day at a commission meeting. So one example, Mr. Kenneth. In about March, April of two thousand fourteen, when the city was developing its budget for the next fiscal year, the city staff proposed a millage to cover the cost of the gap in the police pension fund. You'll never find that in the minutes of the city commission. Why? Because the commissioners came together and said, I don't think so. We need to be able to find that money in the general fund out of the city's budget, and the city did. Many of these cost increases never make the light of day.
Question in the back?
Yes, again, we came to the commission nine months ago in regards to the padlock law. You're all talking about how you want to put Battle Creek up. You all were supposed to work on it and you had it back to us within thirty days to two months. It's been nine months now and we haven't heard anything about the padlock law that was supposed to be going on. In that, we've got a lot of landlords that are coming in, buying up these repo houses, and you're bringing a lot of renters in that are causing a lot of trouble. We came to the commission and we came to the city manager about this. You were supposed to put together a padlock law that is in the books today, but you don't enforce it, the city don't enforce it, and you were going to put something together, Mayor Owens, and you were supposed to get back with us. We haven't heard anything about, nothing from either one of you commissioners up there. I would like you to comment on that right now, what's going on with padlock law? Ten, nine months.
You know what? I'm gonna, I'm gonna say something else. All right. Normally, people want me to hear this. This is why, you've been dominating the questions here in this room. And this is what happens when you come with a commission meeting, doesn't it make, don't you think it makes you feel?
I should ask you a question.
And there was a person here that had her hand up to ask the question.
Come over to my neighborhood with a scum. I didn't ask her.
I'm worried about how you're acting at this meeting.
You don't act to get violent like Mr. Biggie did a while ago. But not just ask. Where's the padlock law?
She did have a question.
Yeah, so I'll take a stab at this Andrew, then, well, let's defer to this Norman.
Could I ask a question right here? Could somebody identify the padlock, the padlock law before we go any further with this? Just to make sure everybody understands the subject matter.
I'm asking you, what's a padlock law, Mr.? You were gonna, okay, you asked me that question, you were gonna come up with a padlock law, okay? What is it? What was it? What are the plans you're planning that you promised up to you come in nine months ago? Mayor Owens, we came to you. So you know what the padlock law is. Please explain to us what's going on with it. Please.
Certainly, I can tell you what I know about it was a law that we had on the books many years ago. It needed some major, major tweaking. And basically what it is, is like, it is like a nuisance ordinance. If a house has so many calls from the police, then at some point, it can be padlocked. But you just can't say police calls to a house. We've got to determine what those calls are. Now, I will tell you, the city manager is and has been working on it, but it, and I think Suzy Vetta was involved in that as well, but it is more complicated than just throwing something together because we had before and it did not work. So we've got to do this and do it right, if in fact, we're going to do it. So I'd be happy to go back and have the city manager prepare a presentation, have a presentation, but at least an update at our next city commission meeting on this very issue, if you'd like.
And I can add something to that if I could, please. Having been at the police department for a few days, padlock law, when we first started it in the city of Battle Creek, had to do with drug houses.
What year, what year was that?
I don't remember the exact year, probably nineteen eighty-six, eighty-seven, somewhere in that general area. As an undercover assigned to the Southwest Enforcement Team and also the BCPD Special Investigations Unit, we would use that padlock law. We had did a search warrant at a house, it was a rental house, we did a second one at the house. We had to have some sort of history to that house that indeed you could padlock it and keep someone out of it. So that's the way I understand, that's where the roots of that came from. Now, it's expanded, I know, to different calls for service, meaning police calls for service, and also nuisance calls. But I can tell you, Mr. Compton, that in the last couple of months, I have met with the city attorney, and I know that she and the chief of police in particular are indeed having conversations about that. I don't know where they stand today necessarily, but I know they're having that conversation. Thank you.
And that's what that's what stands today.
Barry?
If we have this law and this was being enforced back in the Andes, why are we not enforcing it now, right?
I can speak to that just real briefly. The the rules are changing. If I'm not mistaken, didn't mistake just the governor just today, yesterday, also changed the forfeiture laws, if I'm not mistaken, the drug forfeiture laws. Seriously, sir, it used to be when we would execute a search warrant, I'm almost embarrassed to say it, but we would literally take, if there were clothes in the house that was a drug search warrant and they still had the tags on them, we would seize those, assuming that they were maybe purchased with drug money. So there was an overzealous effort, I would say, and that needed to change. There needed to be some some more checks and balances put in place for that. And I think the padlock came, padlock law came about, I know it did, at that same time. So I think that they have not stayed with what society thinks is correct, the padlock law is, that's why it's being revisited. I hope that helps.
And also, I didn't mean, I didn't mean to get Ms. Baldwin's goat there and get you going there, you know, I know you got up kind of violent there, but I didn't mean to get you go, I was just asking a question as a reporter, you know, and I'll, you would handle things, okay?
Questions? Anne?
I'd like to speak to everyone in this room and to the commissioners. I'm very impressed with all of your presentations, I wish you all well. We'll be counting your votes, of course, and we will be done accurately. I want to speak about voter turnout. We have about one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two residents in county county. I love it. Covering around ninety-nine thousand somewhat registered voters. I've been in the precincts when I have seen people come in that have no idea what they're voting on, no idea what the proposals are, hold up the lines, have no clue what they're doing. And so I'm going to begin this real quickly by saying, I'm sure I want everyone to vote. I want informed voters. I don't want people just being. And I think that's what we all want. And when I became county clerk, I visited all the high schools, including Andy's government class at Harbor Creek, to do presentations to help the students understand county government, which is the most misunderstood form of government that we have. I then had roundtable discussions with the state police, with the prosecutor, sheriff and myself, and we visited all of the high schools so that the students would have a better understanding of putting a name to a face and understanding what we did. And then for three presidential cycles, I asked the Battle Creek Community Foundation and the Bar Bureau for money to give a ballot to each high school student, private, for appeal, homeschoolers, Star Commonwealth, public schools, and our community sports association. Man, each of the high schools and each of the students were given a syllabus that was designed by myself and Scott Durham from Langley High School to go through it before they go in. I did all of this because my son went to vote for the first time, and it was a punch card ballot at the time, and I said, are you sure you know what you're doing? And he said, I have no problem. He had not a clue. And here I am, you know, a mom, a clerk, and so that's why I began that program. And that was very, very successful. And we need to have your faces maybe in these high schools, talking about what a county, a city commissioner does and what your main role is, which is to appropriate the budget, if I'm not mistaken. And we've heard all these plans and all these grandiose things such and such, but your main goal, right, is to appropriate the budget. So maybe you have staff to do a lot of the other things, the mayor is ceremonial, I understand all that, but maybe a group of you could start going to high school government classes and doing presentations so they can put names to faces. I also don't think it's a bad idea to run a new presidential and gubernatorial years. The ballot would be longer, but there's always a drop off. There's a drop off with our nonpartisan races, our judicial races, ballot proposals. And so my my goal is to educate the people of the county and get those people that are educated to vote.
One more question, right here.
I'd like to speak to voter turnout too. Anna Williams gets on the radio with her staff every vote time, every vote time, talks to people about what the ballot will look like, what was the last date you could vote, you know, absentee ballot, what it is. All this information's out there and nobody's listening to the radio, too busy looking at their phone. So you would be amazed, you know, the people, I don't know how many times I have jury duty, I just keep getting it over and over and over. I've had it like eight times, it's ridiculous. And I have people in jury duty with me that said they didn't understand how they got jury duty. They said, I don't vote anymore, so why am I getting jury duty? They, they are, there's a total ignorance level out there. They don't understand that you drive, you are going to be in the pool for being potential juror. This is the same thing people don't know about voting in general. They don't know how to vote a ballot, they're too lazy to show up, they don't ask, they won't call Anne's office and ask, what do I do, what am I talented to get a, an absentee ballot, what would I do because I'm going to be gone? And the commission election is always a bad test. I have to tell you right now, the retired people have already left. Well, there's a lot of them. There's a lot of people that leave before it even starts to get cold, they're out here. They don't vote in absentee ballot and don't know what's going on, and they're not back in April. So if you had a commission, we, election in November, April, they're not here. You would be better to have it this summer when they come back. It would be better to have it in August. And I know it would, at least for the year, for the year for summer. But I'm telling you, I just listen to these people that are ignorant and drive to me. It just, I don't understand, they're not involved in the community, they don't really want to know what's going on, and they complain about how the election turns out with the commissioners, or they don't like the way a commissioner did this or did that, but they don't want to get involved. But if you want them to vote, you want younger people to vote, her idea's perfect. Go out there and show these kids how to use a ballot. They don't know how. They're not interested, and you've got to get them interested in the city government and what's going around in your community local, or we're going to lose young people. So it would be a great program to do, to vote the government, and have a government day where just the city commissioners come in and talk about how city government works and about the election, and you might be surprised how you might pique some interest in some of these young people. I think they're interested in a way, but they've got so many other things going on, you've got, you've got to catch a, kind of like, maybe the captive audience, whether they're class.
I want to thank both of you. I really love the comments, and this is actually precisely like, I would love to see ongoing discussion around like, because I think there's a number of different things and a number of different strategies, and I love the idea around how are we building, you know, informing, reaching out proactively. I also know that, you know, again, as a community, we have a lot of new citizens, and those are folks that also, in my experience, when I was at Voces, we had one of our classes, granted, actually, these folks, they're still learning English and are not quite there, but they're future citizens, and they didn't know anything. And so we connected up with the mayor and some of the commissioners to be able to bring them in for a tourist city hall, and it was all new for them. We have a lot of new citizens as well, but I love the idea, I'd love to be able to see continued conversation about how do we proactively work around voter turnout.
Yeah. Excuse me, both of you said good things, obviously, and there's all kinds of things we could do to make voting easier. And so there's, there's two things, there's making voting easier and then there's getting people engaged and informed so that their vote has, you know, some authenticity and some legitimacy, as Ms. Norlander said. Why do we vote one day on a Tuesday? Why don't we vote for a longer period of time? Why do we need a reason to vote absentee? Why can't we vote online? Can we vote on our phone? There's all kinds of things we could do to, I mean, just no brand or stuff to make voting easier, but we hold on to, you know, we vote like it's eighteen oh four.
But we hold on to, you know, we vote like it's eighteen oh four because people think that's fun. I, I don't know. But, you know, we're, at least at the city level, we're at the mercy of, of state, state federal election laws as to how much play we have in, in flexibility. To your, to your point about getting on the schools, I, I know Scott Durham, I've been with Scott Durham as fast as before, I've been recently, but I would absolutely be willing to, you know, three of us sit down and say, okay, how can we, how can we get everybody here in, in, involved in, you know, in a direct engaging with high school kids? I've been volunteering more in the elementary, you know, reading, reading the kids the last, last few years level, but would love to get back into classes like Scott Durham's and, and, you know, folks at Battle Creek Central too. I know some of those teachers as well. I, I, I think that's good stuff. And if, you know, people like Scott or like you, Anne, that wanna help, you know, go at that again, I, I'd be all in with that.
I'd like to say, if I could right here, that we're running out of time. So, if there's gonna be more discussion about how to get people off the vote, maybe if you wanna do that in your closing remarks, then we'll need to start the closing remarks immediately. Anne, if you have a comment?
I just wanna say that any election information you really want, if you go to our webpage, co dot capelous dot mi dot us, we have a fabulous webpage of women speaking from experience. And go to elections. Close of books for campaign finance just occurred. Your reports will all be up on the internet for everyone to see for transparency. You will be able to see the store results from all the elections. Anything you wanna know, it doesn't make you hate. So, I think that we have given the citizens of Capitol County a very valuable tool with, with the information that's out there. So, for candidates that are thinking of voting, who are voting, it's a beautiful resource for the base.
Thank you, Anne. Out with our closing remarks, let's start at that end of the table. We are kind of restricted in time now, so if you try to keep it around two minutes apiece, we should be pretty in shape. Anne, you want to add?
All right, sure, thank you. And, and yes, to Anne's other point about, you know, what we do is, is set the budget for the city of Battle Creek. And one of the things that I'm excited about and, and the new things that's going on is we are, we are completely redoing the way that we budget in the city. I don't know if you guys talked about that. Moving to a system called priority-based budgeting, which is, it's just a more robust process that, that aims to more directly connect what we value, what our vision and goals are for the city government, for the city of Battle Creek, and have that show up in our budget so that someone off the street can look at our budget and see it as a document of priorities, not just a document full of line items of giant numbers and things that, that no one understands. There's been lots of, of goal setting and envisioning. So, you know, we don't just mine the money, but then the other half of that job is are we, are we spending the money in a way that reflects the values of the entire community and that's fair and equitable to everyone in the community? And I think that's, you know, that's our main, our main way of holding ourselves accountable is, is everyone in the community getting a benefit from their government. And, you know, that's, that's the thirty thousand foot view that, that I've always tried to take and will continue to take. So, thank you. And on the court, if anyone, again, if anyone has any questions they'd like to ask me afterwards, I'd be happy to. Thank you. Just a couple of quick comments. One is, Anne, you're right. You know, we deal with policy and finance. So, I don't find it unusual, Mr. Keneff's question about whether those be appropriations of finance or the resolutions that come in front of us to make financial decisions that are above a certain dollar amount for us to do that, since that's two of the things that, that we mainly deal with, is finance, running the city's money. So, in all fairness, I bet most of us voted yes on all those things that are the incumbents right now. Also, just one quick comment. Commissioner Newsom talked about that, demolishing that building up there on the north side of town, on Capitol Northeast. Our commission stood behind him and the commission stuck together to remember the city manager himself, and I'm, I'm not trying to dig up anything that's bad, but actually made a deal with some people up there to not tear that down after we had already voted in a resolution, if I'm not mistaken unanimously, to have that torn down. And our commission stuck together as one in leadership and made that happen. You know, and we just did it. So, I'm proud to be part of the commission with the incumbents that are sitting up here and do that. Anne, you know what? It goes down to one other thing, I keep referring to my dad, and I'm sorry to say it again. He had these things that step up or step aside. So, I think that's what we're trying to do up here. Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Compton.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say, all our discussion about getting people engaged in the voting process, I think really can start by perhaps making it easier for people to run. Currently, as a city commissioner for a ward position, you need to get fifty signatures. And one hundred if you run at large. Perhaps we should do what the county commission does and just allow anyone to run as long as they get a hundred bucks. You'll probably see this room full, filled today. You'll probably see some real contest and opportunity for people to vote. So, that's just my thought. I don't know how we change it or anything like that, but I'm gonna say good luck to each one of the candidates here. I've enjoyed working with this group more than any other group before because I've seen some positive changes that will make Battle Creek better. Hiring of Rebecca Flurry was one step in the right direction that will, I'm, I'm sure she's gonna be pursued after by other communities, but she has really taken transparency to the next level in Battle Creek. I look forward to working with the people of Battle Creek during the next election and the next two years. And I wish everyone the best of luck in this campaign. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, for the opportunity tonight. This has been a really engaging conversation. You know, to close out, you know, this, this type of conversation is exciting. And I'm the kind of person where I'm an idea generator. I like to connect with people. So, even right now, sort of the different ideas, I think that that's the type of energy and things that we want in the city to move forward, that we need that in terms of, you know, people stepping forward, sharing information, talking in different ways, communicating in different ways together. I think that those are some of the ways that we can get things done. So, again, I'm grateful for the conversation tonight. Thank you for having us here. And my door is always open. And what I keep telling people is I lead by listening. So, don't ever hesitate to contact me if you have additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. And as you can tell, I'm kind of passionate about making sure everybody gets heard and that all the questions get asked. So, if you'll forgive my getting excited about that, I, it does, it's important to me to listen to folks. That's one of the things that I, that I hear when I'm out. And people approach me over the artichokes at the grocery store to ask me questions or to share information. That's what I think is important, just being approachable. So, I'm looking forward to serving again. I appreciate your support. Thank you.
As everyone else said, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today. Artichokes? Those A vegetables, I don't know. Artichokes. But I like grapes. The dialogue around voter turnout is really near and dear to me with all the work that I do with NAACP and other groups. So, I'm more than willing to work with residents who want to, and Anne and others who wanted to try and increase voter turnout. Yeah, I think educating voters, getting started with the youth, which I think is great that we've reinstated the Youth Advisory Board, that president of the board is here today. So, thank you, Daniel Yates, for coming out today, our youth commissioners in the city of Battle Creek. And so, we really want, we really wanna make sure we're focusing on our youth. And the work that the Youth Advisory Board is doing is really important. Trying to bring in more youth is also a great idea because they, they have a voice too in the city and what happens here. So, I wanted to make sure that I let everyone know that you're in Ward Two right now. And so, I thank you for coming to our area. And I know you guys have me reading here in Ward Two all the time. So, thanks for being here. There's a lot of changes that are going on in the city. I would be happy to be a part of it and look forward to serving as your Ward Two city commissioner for another two years, if you would so have me. Good luck to all the candidates and have a great evening.
Well, it's been a great hour and a half. And my wife asked me, she said, "Dean, you run a global organization taking care of construction projects, security, anti-terrorism work, safety projects, where our goal for recreation. You have a fifty-three million dollar budget. Why would you wanna run for city commission?" Because I live here. It's as simple as that. I'm not just an idea generator. I'm a doer. You know, the last two years, we've gotten a lot done. Don't believe me. Look at the city's website. Look at the city manager's calls that we just passed Tuesday night for calendar year fifteen, sixteen, and all the things we're gonna hold her specifically accountable for with specific dates and deliverables and outcomes. It's about getting things done. So, I ask for your vote in Ward Three. I have the experience, the background, to continue to get the things done that we all talked about here tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you all again for having us out tonight. I appreciate that, to be able to have you here to vote, and so to judge why it really is. Sorry, being hurt. When I moved back here five years ago, it was because I loved this place. I, I really felt it was important to raise my family here, wouldn't be anywhere else. I saw the assets, all the potential here, and I, and I also saw the problems. And I would really like the opportunity to be able to help address those problems in a more concrete way. I've, I've been lucky that for the past five years, I've been able to take my spare time and devoted to this community through my volunteerism. And I really see this as a, as a next step for me and being able to get back to this wonderful place. The things that I've heard up here tonight are very encouraging. Goes along with a lot of the ideas that I have for the future of Battle Creek. And I would love to work with these folks, with these incumbents, because I think we can get a lot done together. So, thank you. Get out there on November third and vote, and hopefully it's okay for us, at large, city commissioner. Thank you all.
Again, thank you very much for having us. It's always a pleasure to be here. One last thing on the voter turnout, 'cause I keep on, I'm passionate about it. Heard me raise my voice, too. I, I still think people in, in our country need to make voting their priority. In this room, I know we have a veteran here. We have two veterans that serve on our city commission who fought for this country, for that right. By golly, people need to recognize that. We can make it easy. We can do anything we want, but we've got to remember how we got that vote. And I appreciate our veterans that are serving here. I was raised in a military family, and I'll tell you, I, I did miss a couple of elections, as we saw in the newspaper. And, but I'll tell you, my father, if he was here at that time, he would've chewed on me pretty good. But anyhow. So, anyway, I wanna go back to being good stewards. How you brought that up, and Commissioner Binky mentioned an area that we are being good stewards now through Battle Creek Unlimited. Just last Tuesday night, we had a workshop on the industrial facilities exemption certificates. Years ago, we had a contract compliance officer who gave us the data to make sure that if we issue a tax exemption, that we're, that they're complying like they're supposed to, and that information is coming back. We've now changed that. The city assessor is going to be providing that information to us too, so we can be the good stewards on that. The inspection issue is ongoing. We should be wrapping up some things very soon to make this city a better community that people wanna do business in. I had an issue back in, I think it was January, out there on Helmer Road, that new theater. You see how they've painted it and done some great things. That's gonna be an amazing place. Those people were out of Florida. They contacted me and said, "We're having a horrible time with the city of Battle Creek. We don't think we wanna come here anymore." So, I helped them go through the process and through inspection, got everything straightened out. Thank goodness they have decided to come. Transparency, openness, we want you involved. We listen. This commission has listened, and we have implemented, and we will continue to do that. The fee issue, it's important to know that the fee bond and insurance schedule that Commissioner Walters is referring to, there may be some issues within there, but it's always important to recognize that if we raise a fee, we cannot raise the fee anymore than the cost, the true cost of doing business. So, always keep that in mind, but it is worth looking at periodically to make sure that is still the case. So, again, thank you so much for the opportunity. Look forward to seeing you all at the polls on November third. Thank you again.
I'd like to simply add to what really what Anne Orlander said. I was pretty much impressed with, with all the candidates here with what their, their desires and their statements were. Dean made the statement that he's a doer. I hope they're all doers. There's only three types of people in the world, in my mind, that's those who make things happen, those who watch things happen, and those who don't know what to happen. So, I hope that these people, all our candidates are, make it happen to people. So, I wanna thank you for coming. I also wanna tell you that, you know, if you wanna kinda motivate people to get out and vote, we meet here the fourth Thursday of every month. We're here at five thirty, and the setup, our meeting starts at six thirty. We're here till eight thirty, and we usually have forty to sixty people here. So, we give you a chance to meet with them, shake some hands, and, and tell them how important their votes are to you, so. Sure.
I acknowledge, I acknowledge Commissioner Walters, Commissioner Newsom, and Sam Gray. I, my dear friend Hal is also a veteran. Are there any more veterans in here? Please let me get, see, not much.
So, I wanna thank you for coming, and I thank you, candidates, again, and good luck to all.